Pledge of Allegiance indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Close. Thank you very much. Welcome, everybody. Good to see you all here. Okay, we'll call this meeting to order and you may read the role.
Mr. Smith?
Here.
Ms. Franklin?
Here.
Ms. French?
Here.
Mr. Prithridge?
Yes, here.
Ms. Ragoo?
Here.
Mr. Bracken?
Here.
Mayor Snively?
Here.
Okay, we're gonna do the Pledge of Allegiance. If you'd like to join us, you're welcome.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And now can I have a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any corrections or changes? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. All right, we will move to public participation and we have a couple of proclamations that I would like to read. Whereas, the basis for the continuity of any society is education, and in Oxford, the education of our youth is a priority. And whereas, in order to achieve its highest goals, education must not only impart knowledge, but also teach students how to live, forming and strengthening their moral character to make a better life for themselves as individuals and for society as a whole. And whereas, a global spiritual leader, the Rebbe Rabbi Menachem M. Schnirson, stressed that a moral and ethical education empowers every individual to develop their full potential in making the world a better place. And whereas, such an education can nurture the unity of diverse peoples through encouraging increased acts of goodness and kindness with an awareness that even a single positive act can change the world and usher in an era of global peace. And whereas, April 9th, 2025 will mark 123 years since the Rebbe's birth, and this year begins the celebrations of the 76th anniversary of his leadership of the Chabad Lubavitch movement. And whereas, Education and Sharing Day is observed every year on the Rebbe's birthday in recognition of his outstanding and lasting contributions toward the improvement of education, morality, and acts of charity around the world, a day to pause and reflect on our responsibility to ensure our youth have the foundation necessary to live lives rich in purpose and fulfillment through service and good works. Now therefore, I William B. Snively, Mayor of the City of Oxford, Ohio, hereby proclaim Wednesday, April 9th, as Education and Sharing Day in Oxford and call upon everyone to work together to create a better, brighter, and more promising future for all. And I believe I have Harlan Schottenstein here to accept this.
Would you like to say anything?
Yeah, I have a few remarks.
My name is Harlan Schottenstein and I live at 2 West Spring Street here in Oxford, Ohio. I was asked by my Rabbi and good friend Yossi Greenberg to appear here today on his behalf for this honorable occasion. He really wanted to be here today, but unfortunately, he had to be out of town at a wedding, not his own, but of two former students of Miami and members of the Chabad house who had invited him to their wedding. One of the great things about both Miami and Chabad is the love and dedication of students that they develop for their community while they are here in Oxford. And I can say, as a graduate myself, many years ago, it is a feeling that follows you all through your life. The relationship is strong and lasting, well beyond the short time that they are actually here because of the love and support they feel from the community and from Chabad. Both are places they feel secure and can help them make a successful transition from their home communities to their new lives as contributing members of society. That is why so many young people meet future spouses during the time they are here. They are not only Miami mergers, but they are also Chabad couples from the Jewish community. At Chabad, they feel the love and support that they had at home. The Chabad house of Miami under Rabbi Yossi is the home away from home. It is the place where they can develop and strengthen their Jewish identity while getting one of the best educations and become contributing members of society. It is the mission for the Jewish community and has developed over generations through the guidance of Chabad rabbis around the world. Rabbi Menachem Mendel Schnirson, of blessed memory, was born at this time in the month of April, 1902, in Nikolayev, Russia. He was known as a great scholar, even as a young man, and showed concern for others at a young age. He was highly educated and understood not only the importance of prayer, but of education for people of all ages and both men and women. He was able to escape the Holocaust by leaving Europe for the United States in June of 1941. And he was well-known for sending out emissaries to communities far beyond the urban center of New York to help his brethren where they were. He was uniquely known for his belief that every Jewish person is important as well as all other individuals in society, that we all have a special role to play in the world, to play in the world we live in, making it a better place for all. Though he passed away in June 1994, he is still fondly remembered around the world. So on behalf of Rabbi Yossi Greenberg in the Chabad Jewish community of Oxford, Ohio, I warmly accept this proclamation, recognizing the acclaimed Rabbi Menachem Mendel Schnirson on this solemn occasion and will proudly present it to Rabbi Yossi Greenberg when he returns from the joyous occasion he is at tonight. Thank you.
Super. Thank you, Harlan. Appreciate it. Okay, and now we have a second proclamation. On April 22nd, 1970, United States Senator Gaylord Nelson of Wisconsin and Dennis Hayes organized the first nationwide day devoted to environmental awareness and education that was celebrated by an estimated 20 million Americans. And whereas, this day of environmental awareness and education is celebrated worldwide in some 180 countries with the participation of over 4,000 separate organizations. And whereas, individuals and institutions have a mutual responsibility to seek ecological, economical, and ethical choices that enable the world as well as our individual communities to establish and maintain sustainable societies. Now therefore, I William B. Snively, Mayor of the City of Oxford, Ohio, do hereby proclaim that on Saturday, April 22nd, 2025, the City of Oxford will recognize and participate in the national and international celebration of Earth Day. I urge all citizens to celebrate Earth Day and remind each person of their right and responsibility to the wise use of this global home, to heal, preserve, and improve the earth and the quality of life for this and future generations, and to approach every day as Earth Day. And I believe Michael will accept this. There will be an Earth Day celebration uptown in Oxford, and I hope everybody is able to be there. Okay, and now we have a report from the Enjoy Oxford Organization by Ms. Kim Daggy. Hi, Kim. This is her favorite thing to do, so we're happy to have you here.
You know me all too well.
Yeah.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of council, and those in attendance this evening. Oh, mic's ahead of me. Thank you. I do have some slides, so you can look there rather than looking here. Bring my anxiety level down just a little bit. I started with this slide. Obviously, 2024 was a humongous year, one that we would like to experience more often than every 100 years. But the eclipse was amazing. This is the numbers that Jessica put together using some data from Ohio Tourism and our general unofficial poll of asking those who were in attendance during the parks of over 34 states. The pictures down here were from a gentleman named Dennis. I did redact his name, but he sent those photos to me just after having conversation and gave us permission to use however we wanted them to be. But it was so sweet to say, you know, "We just enjoyed talking with you," and we really liked Oxford. Just at a glance, most in this room know we do a lot of events or help support events here running in town, and we're working to make that year-round, but also bring new and old. We had Alaram, and one beautiful thing about our organization is we can pivot very quickly. So we did accept and help organize some of the filming that occurred, getting contacts for the art director and the director in general, as well as doing a pop-up movie night with the art director on some individual work that he had done. So that was a lot of fun over at the OCAC. We also returned Goba, which is the Great Ohio Bicycle Adventure, which was so hot.
It was hot.
LaRosa was there and his team and helping to supply food over at the tri. It was a beautiful location and nice to showcase. So if you missed it, I don't know where you were, because they were all over. And we even did some yoga on top of the College of Down for one of the activities and showcasing Oxford Coffee Company and different things that make Oxford special. And then we also, and we've always done Paint the Town Red, but we decided to paint the town blue this year for Talawanda, so we did that and did a little after-party uptown. Other things, we're known for Music Festival, but we did brand a few of our concerts last year with the Puppy Picnic as well as the Pride Picnic. We also helped support the Pub Runners, so the crazy people that run year-round, going from location to location as a loosely-formed group. Anyone's welcome to join, especially visitors that might be traveling. We helped with the Tri-State Trails and showcasing and having one of their regional meetings here this summer. Or was that September? I think that might have been September. It was supposed to be in the summer, but we had to delay it. And then we helped support with the Fox mural as well, and that was a lot of fun to meet Hannah. And then Beta Theta Pi came. I did do some resources for that. And also helping to support, we do the Porsche Car Show, but we also are helping with the Mason's Car Show. And then new, if you do not know, the Black History Tour is now a podcast, so you can do it as an audio tour. And we will plan to, we have printed guides, and you can get to it from our website digitally, but we'll put some QR codes in the printed ones so that we can reuse those and also attract people to use the audio tour. For the first time that I know of, we did send a staff member to ESTO, which is the U.S. Travel Association's marketing tourism seminar. So Marina came back from that with 94 slides she put together for us as a resource, which is overwhelming. No, we're not going through those, but ideas for our organization, and we have implemented some of those, so also investing in what we do. We also have started or helped start with the city and also the Chamber, the Ohio Business Network, on WhatsApp to help communicate with our business community, because the small-town vibe, our small-business owners are what make us special, along with Miami University and the city. Here, one big thing that we do as far as our mission is marketing. Here are some of the advertisements that we have put together, both in digital form and in print. Some of these are also in conjunction with the university to try and target not just leisure travels, but business travel and conference coming to the university and enjoying our town. For visitor engagement, we have a very robust website that we have made some changes to. We have a few sliders on there as far as trying to let people navigate our homepage a lot quicker. We also have invested in what's called Sherpa for, what do I want to say? They've been vetted for influencers, vetted for the travel industry in Ohio, so we have completed six influencer, or will have completed six influencer visits as of May 3rd, when our sixth one will happen for Electric Group Festival and also when one of the epic soccer tournaments is here. And then also our printed guides that we have printed up there. We actually have mailed 131 to over 27 states in the continental United States and also to four countries. So we're all over the world. And then we also have increased, we've had over 62,000 sends in newsletters and Constant Contact and have a pretty stellar open rates as far as click rates compared to what the industry standard is. My marketing director, Marina, put some of these slides together for us in our year-end report, but some of our content does very well, 4,000 to 5,000 reach. We've been working on also doing our own paid advertising and boosted posts. Our website visits had over 1,000 in one day, probably had something to do with Oxford Community Park and our Freedom celebrations out there. And we've had almost 1,000 new followers, so we're pretty excited about that. Some of our best content has been highlighted here with, obviously, over 5,000 visits on Facebook, 1.4, sorry, 1,000 on Instagram for one of our Big Impact Weekends, highlighting some of the things that can be done also throughout the city with the university. And wanted to leave you with a few quotes, because it is important, tourism helps. Where, this is a quote from Longwoods International, who does a lot of surveying in our industry. And among those travelers who moved to a new location in the past three years, 67% of them reported they had visited their new hometowns as a leisure visitor prior to moving there. So thank you and helping support what we do.
Super. Does anyone have questions for Kim? Thank you very much for your presentation. You continue to do a very good job, and we appreciate you.
Appreciate all of you. Thank you.
All right. You're welcome. All right. At this time, we will take public comments on any items that are not on tonight's agenda. So if you have an issue that you'd like to address, come forward and give us your name and where you live, and we'll give you five minutes to talk to us about those items. If you have comments on items that are on the agenda, just wait until they come up and we'll recognize you then. Hi, Chris.
Good evening. Chris Shoker, 5790 St. Rebecca Road in Oxford. So I wanted to update you. It's been two weeks since your last meeting when we were discussing the Chestnut Street Connector and the impact, who, my wife and I, for that portion of the Oaks Project. And unfortunately, at this point, we have not received any of the information that was laid out for myself when I had a meeting with city officials on the 12th of March. I followed up with Jessica on 17th of March, who informed me that because we had an attorney, that that information would go to our attorney. We have yet to receive any of that information other than a revised offer. Nothing else that we had discussed with regarding any MOUs.
Okay, thanks, Chris.
I think that in order to move forward, we've got two more weeks, and we're gonna have to make some decisions now because we are running out of time. So.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Yep, we appreciate you. Are there any others who would like to make comments to council tonight? All right, we will move then to the consent agenda. Can I have a motion to approve it?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Do any items need to be removed for discussion? Okay, all those in favor of the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Consent agenda is approved. We'll move to resolutions. Please read the first one.
A resolution directing the city manager to designate 5234 Hester Road as a location for affordable housing and begin the rezoning process.
Okay, is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. And who's gonna take us through this one? Jessica? Aye.
Good evening. Excuse my cold. As you know, we've been working for several months, well, years, on a development at Hester Road. And several months ago, we got permission from you to release a new request for proposals. In the proposals, we listed the current zoning, but also stated in the request for proposals that if they wanted us to rezone it, that we would be willing to look into that. And we had four respondents, and three of the four indicated that they would need us to rezone in order for their proposal to be viable. So with that in mind, to go ahead and get, because we know it takes a while. It has to go through Planning Commission and then back to council. We are here tonight to kind of just confirm with council that you want Hester Road to be used for an affordable housing development and that you're willing to begin the rezoning process. It is currently zoned R1B. The new proposed zoning would be R2A, which would allow up to 24 units with a planned development. And I'm happy to answer any questions if you have.
Super. Thank you very much. Is there anyone from the public who would like to address this resolution? Okay, thank you. Counselors, have any questions or comments?
I just kind of have a procedural question, which is, we're going through the process of revising our zoning map in general, and so how does this fit in to that?
It just won't be done in time. We don't anticipate that our code update will be done until fall. And many of these applicants are hoping to get started right away once they learn about if they're selected or not. And so this would allow them to stay on time with their proposal. A lot of them are trying to get that ARPA money that we have set aside, and they can only do that if they're like ready to go, and so the timing is the issue.
And this will go to the next planning meeting?
Which is canceled in April.
So go to May.
Okay. All right, thank you.
So, and then, you know, while we're on the topic, I know that we're going through, but, you know, I think that we want to think about how to optimize the zoning of all the city-owned properties for which we're thinking about affordable housing, and this is just one of them. But I think we need to think about density that would support the kind of development that would be affordable. So I'm in support of this. I look part of having a conversation at the Planning Commission, but when we think about other properties that we own, I hope we think seriously about that, too.
Thank you.
I was gonna ask, actually, is our planning meeting canceled because of lack of material?
It would be too late for the April Planning Commission anyway. We're trying to follow our own rules, and so.
I thought it was just a week that we needed.
Yeah, you have to turn your application in several weeks in advance, and so we'd be, I believe, I don't want to misspeak, but I believe we'd be in time for the May meeting with our application.
Just trying to get it earlier if we could, but I understand if we can't.
Okay. Thank you very much. Are there any other comments or questions? Okay, all those in favor of the resolution indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Resolution is adopted. We'll move to the second.
A resolution accepting the bid and authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with Barrett Paving Materials Incorporated for the 2025 street resurfacing and maintenance program at a cost of $577,969.30, with alternative one costing $79,184.50, plus a contingency in the amount of $42,846.20, for a total not to exceed $700,000.
Okay, is there a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Hi, Michael.
Good evening, Your Honor, members of council. Our list of streets proposed for resurfacing is in Exhibit A. We also bid two alternates, North Elm Street from church to Sycamore, and also the surface course of the Heritage Vineyard subdivision. That's still the obligation of the developer to complete that, but we did get pricing for that. We received two bids, as expected. A lot of the small players in paving have been bought out, and we have Barrett and John R. Jurgensen are the major players now for municipal contracts. We worked with Barrett, I believe, the last six or seven years consecutively, they've done a great job for us. They were the low bid, and we're recommending you award a contract to them for the streets proposed and alternate number one. We did speak with the developer for alternate number two. He has his own contractor lined up. He plans on doing that work this summer as well. And once he does that, upon successful inspection, we'll accept those streets and the city will begin maintenance on that subdivision.
Okay.
So we ask for your approval tonight. Thank you. Be glad to answer your questions.
All right. Thank you very much. Is there anyone from the public who would like to address this resolution? Okay, thank you. Counselors, have any questions or comments?
Well, I do have a question. So I've kind of raised this issue, and we've talked about this in our strategic planning, is that some of the streets that we're talking about here are kind of what we would call incomplete. They don't have facilities for pedestrians or, because they were developed at a time when sidewalks were not part of the subdivision requirements. And so we're not doing this, but under that policy, when we do a street project, we need to ensure that all modes are served, or else we need to do an approval that we're exempting the project from that. We're saying, you know, under particular circumstances, that's not necessary. So I don't need a specific answer here, but I think that, like, under our policy, if we're doing a project like a repaving, we need to address those deficiencies, you know, for example, streets that lack sidewalks, or provide some alternative accommodation. So just big picture, what's kind of our strategy? We're moving ahead with the project, but how are we thinking about remediating the streets so that they can provide accessibility for all users?
First, we always look for grant funding, and that environment has changed them the last few months. But we've been very successful in getting grant funding and not having to use local dollars to build these sidewalks when they should have been built with the developments, frankly. So in order to do that, really, those projects have to stand on their own. They have to get their funding, and they're complicated. We don't always have the necessary right-of-way to proceed with them. Between the curb gutter and sidewalk assessment program and doing that and doing the paving contract and everything else that we're expected to do, time is precious, and it takes time. So these projects are gonna have to stand on their own merits, and hopefully, we can get grant funding to make that work. Because otherwise, if we use paving dollars to do sidewalks, we're not gonna pay very many streets, and our street road conditions will go down very, very quickly.
So I guess my just question is that, you know, we are moving ahead without making those improvements. So it's either two things. We have a commitment to try to make those improvements sometime in the near future using that kind of funding, or we need to make a recommendation that we're waiving that requirement. So I'm just kind of curious where things stand.
I mean, I can come back with a resolution requesting that we waive those streets. Sure.
Councilor Prithridge, I think you're referring to one of the council goals, that within two years of a paving program, we seek to do a complete street. So we did create an Excel sheet of all the streets. We looked at, do we have the right-of-way? Do we not? Is there a sidewalk? Is it not? We looked at the length. We looked at tree removal. We looked at utilities and all that kind of stuff. kind of stuff. And our goal is to try to get a cost proposal in time for the budget season to say what it would be to do those improvements within two years, but we're not ready yet. But we do have that research in process. I'm sorry if Mike did not know that, I was working with the city engineer in order to bring that forward to you during the budget process in that work session that we have when we talk about what you brought to us and then what the budget impact is. So coming soon, but it's in process.
All right, thank you. That's just, I just that we have a commitment to, you know, we have, some of these streets have, you know, they all have pedestrians, and some of them have no pedestrian access other than via these streets. We have pedestrians who are blind, who are walking in the street. So, so just as long as we have a commitment to try to remediate the streets within some time period, then I'm good. I'm happy we're moving forward with the curb and gutter and the repaving now, as long as we have that commitment.
Is there anyone else?
While we are not paving Locust Street, we are doing a Locust Street sidewalk connection project.
Right.
Of which we have grant funding to do 90% of that work.
Right.
So we will continue to identify funding. We will continue to work with Jessica, as she stated, and we will continue to do as much as we possibly can.
Absolutely, we appreciate it. Are there any other questions or comments? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution is adopted, please read the third.
A resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with Rodden Myers Incorporated for the replacement of the supervisory control and data acquisition computer control system at the wastewater treatment plant for a total cost not to exceed $403,441.50.
Okay, is there a motion to adopt this resolution?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, thank you very much.
So the council has budgeted $411,000 to do this project. The existing computer automation control system at the plant is from the late 1990s. So it has served us well, but it's at the end of its useful life, probably beyond that already. So we went out for bids. Normally, when we only get one bid, we're very concerned about it. In this case, we only expected one bid. Rodden Myers has worked at our plant for decades. They also do work at our water plant. They're extraordinarily qualified and have the knowledge of plant process control to work seamlessly with our staff. So we're recommending approval of this contract.
And it came in under your target?
Yes.
That's good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone from the public who would like to address this exciting resolution? Okay. Counsel, any questions or comments?
I just want to say, you know, wastewater is one of those things, people don't think about it until something goes wrong.
That's right.
So I appreciate everything that's being done to preemptively make sure things don't go wrong.
Thank you.
Okay, all those in favor of the resolution indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution is adopted, read the next one.
A resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a local let project agreement with the Ohio Department of Transportation for the installation of electric vehicle charging stations at the Uptown Surface Lot and the Municipal Building.
All right. Is there a motion to adopt this?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. And Mike?
Again, congratulations to our city engineer, Scott Otto. He went out and got this $900, $5,000 grant to bring fast EV chargers to the city.
That's awesome.
Six separate stations.
Wow.
So there will be four at Lot 53, AKA Lot 52, and also two at the Municipal Building, Municipal Building parking lot. This resolution asks for your permission for us to local let the project. We will administer the contract, manage the construction, and by doing so, we will save $90,000 on top of the grant that we've already been awarded.
That's excellent.
Even better, there's no local match on the grant, as ODOT's using toll revenue credits to cover the local match, so zero local funds, except for some of our time here.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Is there anyone from the public who would like to address this resolution? Okay. Do you want to say something?
Yeah, I do.
I do.
Yeah, because this is really huge, and I think obviously, for the sustainability benefits of supporting the transition to electric vehicles, this is just essential to that. The fast charging is how people who are driving long distances, that's what they need, and currently, we have none of it in the city of Oxford. So that's great, but I want to just talk about the economic development potential of this, and Bill, I think, can share with this. When you, when you own an electric vehicle, it's a little bit different than, you know, you still need to stop and do a fill-up. It takes a little bit longer. But two things, what that means is, when you go for a drive, A, you often look for non-highway routes. If you can go 55 or 60, that's the sweet spot in an EV. So instead of blasting on the Highway 75, you take the direct route on the surface roads. You get much, and so I'm driving roads like 27, where I might have been driving on interstate, and then you look for a place to charge. The chargers are often at Walmarts, parking lots, so if you can find one that's in a town, you go out of your way to visit the town. I just went to Detroit for a conference, I looked, and Findlay, there was a fast charger in downtown Findlay. I had never been to downtown Findlay. It's a beautiful downtown. I ate at this great fast food, like a burger joint, we played pinball, and then we were back on our road. So I think it's, have one in our uptown area, we will support our businesses in addition to sustainability, because I think what you do is, you then have, you know, 30 to 45 minutes to kill, and Oxford Uptown is the perfect place to do that. I'm super excited about this. I just want to ask for clarification again. We've had this conversation a few times. Lot 52 is the surface lot that we are also looking at having potential development possibilities long-term. So it's been my hope that we can find a site that's, that we wouldn't have to move should we decide to redevelop Lot 52. So are we, like, all the documents keep saying the surface lot, but, but A, I think there are spots that are available. I mean, even if we don't develop it, a farmer's market basically occupies that space all Saturday mornings for half, you know, half the day. I think we want the charger in a spot that's free and available. So are we, are we looking at putting it in Lot 52? Are we open to moving it adjacent to, for example, on Park Place, East or West?
We had a meeting to discuss that topic. There were several staff concerns about the safety of having chargers park vehicles in the roadway, because many of the ports will be on the driver's side, and that will subject the driver to some risk, trying to plug and unplug their vehicle. So we met about it, we discussed it. We're recommending that the four fast chargers go along the south of the island in Lot 52.
Okay.
I, I just think this is, I don't want to have, have this conversation here. I think Lot 52 historically was a building. Over the long range, it has the potential to be a building. If we invest hundreds of thousands of dollars in chargers, we might just have to move them later when we decide, as I thought we were going to do an RFP to look at the potential development of the site. So all I'm saying is, I have visited many chargers that were on, you know, on parallel parking. I've visited others that were pull-in at, like we have on, on the east, like Park Place. I think there are plenty of places uptown where we could put them that, A, don't lock us into Lot 52 being a surface lot for all of time, and B, wouldn't be unavailable for Saturday mornings from 8:00 AM to 1:00 PM. So I just hope, I'm so excited about the chargers, I just hope we put them in a place that does, we don't then regret where we've put them.
Well, I just respectfully disagree with you. I think that that's a good place for them. I think that that's being used now as a farmer's market. As you pointed out, it's surface parking that is used for every event that comes along, and I don't foresee it being developed anytime soon, certainly with the finances that are available to us as a city. So that's just my opinion. I would like to say and agree with Counselor Prithridge that this is really good for economic development, because as an EV owner, you get apps that show you where all of the chargers are, and if you're making a trip, you plot out where you're going. It takes about 10 minutes, and you figure out where you're going to go. And like you said, if there's some in Oxford, we will get people who will stop in Oxford on their way, just because they'll look around, they'll go into the shops, they will eat, and they have lunch here or have dinner here, and I think it's a really good win for the city, and very excited for it.
So, so since we're on this conversation, I thought that we had had in our strategic planning session, a conversation of being open to the development of Lot 52. Before we go down the road, is, I mean, it seems like this is the best opportunity to just poll people on whether they think putting them in Lot 52 is the appropriate long-term decision, or whether something adjacent to Lot 52 is something that we would prefer. I mean, Bill and I disagree, I'm kind of curious what other people think.
Mr. Mayor, if I might. We did have discussions. That site has been studied in the past when we were looking at it for a possible municipal building, or possible courthouse, or possible court, jail, hybrid. It was studied quite intensively. We looked at doing underground parking with a structure above, and the economics just don't work. The site is too small to accommodate that. We had this discussion. We don't see a better alternative. We've talked about the need to rehab this courthouse building. The need's obvious, the funding is not obvious. So we recommend a proceed.
So again, there is East Park Place.
Is there anyone on council who would like to make an opinion on this issue of location? Okay.
Was, so the rationale was basically because it doesn't seem like a building is likely to be placed there? That's the main argument for putting it in that lot?
When we looked at, to include parking, the economics do not work. We tried, if you remember, many, many years ago, there was a.
I do.
Pedro's Mexican restaurant there. We tried to work with the owner to acquire a larger footprint for the building. We could not get control of the other property, and it's a small confined space, and it just did not support parking with a structure on top of it.
David, did you have any other comment?
Well, I, again, I, I'm thinking about Miami University, when they were saying, where are we going to put geothermal? And they said, there's a big lawn in front of Mallett, and, and we said to them at the time, are you sure you're not going to, you just want to use that site for something else? And they said, no, 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 that's, and, and they, and they drilled geothermal, and now that site is unavailable for the redevelopment of Mallett Hall. So I'm just saying that if, if we can put it, for example, adjacent within what's currently either the parking lot of East or West Park Place, within a public right-of-way that we 100% know is never going to be developable, we don't box ourselves in for that future of the site. You know, we've talked about something that, that even if it's just a farmer's market, if it's 100 feet here outside of Lot 52, Lot 52 is not a small development site as far as uptown Oxford's concerned, you know? And so whether it's a public building, whether it's a farmer's market on the first floor and public uses on the second, third, and fourth, I'm just saying, if we're going to invest, what's the price tag on these chargers, Mike?
$900.
$900,000. Do we want to put $900,000 into something that we, there was, there's even a slight possibility that we want to, we need to move in the future.
To be fair, not all the money's for that site.
Right.
Okay, okay, that's what I'm saying, but I'm just saying that I have seen chargers in lots of locations that are analogous to East Park Place. I'm not sure about the wiring and all that stuff. I'm just saying that if we put in East Park Place, we would never, we would, our options would remain open, and it would be equally serviceable and better.
Okay, thank you, you've made that point, okay. If anyone wants to make a motion, it would be separate from this resolution, because the resolution does not specify the location.
Well, and, you know, these chargers can be moved, and I'm not sure what the useful life is, but 10 years out, I'm not sure we'll have a plan for that site for municipal function now. Maybe for a private function, we could probably sell it now, but I'm not sure we want to do that. We only have so much open space uptown, and this is utilized for parking, the farmer's market, other events uptown use it as well. So, you know, we discussed this at length at staff meeting and decided this, that we needed to move forward with this. It's, it's, you know, as you say, it'll attract people uptown, they'll know where it's at, you know, if it's in a parking space, that, that might work, too, but Mike pointed out that if the charger's on the driver's side, it's not good. And much of our parking uptown is, is parallel parking, and so, you know, we'd like to see you move forward with this so we can get it done.
Okay.
I might add the, there's only one spot where this is a massive transformer that Duke will power. It shall be placed at the northeast corner of that surface lot. There's not another choice.
Right.
The system's been designed to feed that island. I don't know if extending that extra distance will matter. I believe it will, as far as how far away from that transformer we can be, but we will have to redesign if we change the location.
Okay, thank you very much.
I would just, can I have one last thing?
Yes.
And I would say, too, the economic development strategic plan, so far as I've seen it, doesn't, Lot 52 is not like a hot spot, hot commodity uptown that's within the priority area. So if it assuages your concerns at all, in some of the economic development conversations I've been a part of, it's not like Lot 52's an immediate high priority on that list.
Okay.
I guess also the functionality, I don't know why, why you would block off a charger for a Saturday morning when most of our visitors are in town. Why create the conflict if it could be on Church Street as parallel or in East Park Place, even if it's not developed? It's just, the charger will be in demand, and it will be out of function from 8 till noon.
Okay, well, that does not affect this resolution, so we're going to lay that discussion aside, and you can certainly bring it up again. Is there any further discussion on this resolution? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, the resolution's adopted, you can read the next one.
A resolution authorizing the release of a public improvement bond in the amount of $271,041.98 for Al's Landing subdivision, blocks A and B, and $617,455.71 for block C, and acceptance of a new public improvement bond in the amount of $233,482.45, ensuring the completion of the Al's Landing subdivision public improvements.
Okay, is there a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Michael?
The developers have completed the underground portion of the work for the subdivision, and the majority of the street system is complete. Everything has passed inspection, we're pleased with the work. We're recommending release of the original bond, and we would accept the new bond for the stated amount. That will guarantee the few things that need to be completed, such as sidewalks and planting the trees, things of that nature.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there anyone from the public who would like to address this resolution? Counselors, have any questions or comments? Are you ready to vote? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution is adopted, please.
A resolution authorizing the city manager to sign a memorandum of understanding with three property owners within the North Ridge 3 subdivision regarding maintenance of the existing bike path easement between Honor Lane and Dufour Lane.
Okay, is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, and city manager?
Yeah, thank you. So three property owners within the North Ridge subdivision reached out to the city, inquiring about the existing bike path between Honor and Dufour Lanes. This was in response to the 2021-2024 planning process for the completion of the route planning for the Oxford area trail system. So in December of 2024, the route alignment through this easement was approved by city council. The property owners are not against the path usage for future trail inspection, expansion, excuse me. The owners request that the city take a closer look at ownership, traffic safety, and maintenance. So the attached memorandum of understanding is a result of discussions between the law director and the owner's representative. Staff requests that council authorize the city manager to sign the memorandum of understanding. The next step would be for the city to survey the boundary of this section of the path and easement, and then record a new easement. After the survey is completed, a more specific easement document will be recorded with the Butler County Recorder's Office, and the cost of the land survey is estimated to be $2,800.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there anyone from the public who would like to address this resolution? Thank you. And counselors, do you have any questions or comments?
Just a thank you for taking the next steps and working with property owners, it's really great, and I was glad that they came forward and we were able to have a nice conversation.
And Chris gets that thanks, because he worked with them.
Thanks, Chris.
Since I gave Sam off, I decided to present it to council.
Great, thanks.
All right, thank you. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor of the resolution indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution is adopted, and we will move to the last one.
A resolution accepting the insurance bid of Insurance Specialist Group DBA Love A resolution accepting the insurance bid of Insurance Specialist Group DBA Love Insurance Partners for the city's property and casualty insurance coverage for 2025.
Okay. Is there a motion to adopt this resolution?
A motion to substitute.
Let's move it first, and then we'll come back.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Heidi, do you want to explain?
Yes. So, good evening, mayor and councilors. In front of you is a revised resolution for our insurance bid from Love Insurance. On Friday afternoon, the city received a call from Jim Love of Love Insurance notifying us of an error in the bid he presented. Travelers had excluded professional healthcare services, which is our fire and EMS under the umbrella. The additional cost was $10,000. Love Insurance has agreed to split the additional cost, and will issue an agency credit for the misquote of $5,000. Therefore, we need to increase, increase our resolution by $5,000.
Okay.
So, staff is requesting that council approve the general liability and property and casualty insurance renewal of $279,730 for 2025. This represents a $25,191 increase over the last year's cost. Our agent, Love Insurance, shopped the competitive market and was able to achieve a now 9.9% increase, while simultaneously reducing deductibles compared to last year. If you remember last year, HCC, who is our current provider, just randomly increased all of our deductibles drastically. So, Travelers was able to reduce those, those deductibles back down. HCC's proposal was a 14% increase over last year's premium, so we're still saving money.
Okay. Thank you, Heidi. Is there any, well, first, let's take the motion, and then we'll go to public commentary.
A motion for substitution.
So, we're going to substitute the resolution that councilors have on their desk. That is, just replaces the numbers that Heidi indicated, so that you know what we're doing. It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you very much. All those in favor of the substitution indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Okay, so now we're on the substitution, and I will ask if there's anyone from the public who would like to address the resolution. Thank you for being here anyway. And we will then come back to council discussion or questions. Okay. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Okay, that resolution is adopted. We don't have any first or second reading ordinances, and so that brings us to announcements and communication. And I will begin with city manager Doug Elliott.
Thank you. Just a couple of things. So, I'm pleased to announce that I have offered the Director of Parks and Recreation position to Donald Chadwick, Chad Smith, and he is accepted. Chad is a resident of Oxford, Ohio. He's been employed by the Metro Parks of Butler County since October of 2019. He also served as the Executive Director of the Three Valley Conservation Trust from August of 2017 to October of 2019, and as a park manager at the East Fork State Park with the Ohio Department of Natural Resources from November 2013 to August 2017. Chad is a graduate of Miami University, where he received his Bachelor of Science in Commerce and Business Management in 2018. Chad will start his new position on May 5th, so I'm very pleased to have Chad join the city's management team as our Director of Parks and Recreation. I look forward to his contributions as director, and I'm certain that he will prove to be an asset to the city.
Absolutely.
And the last thing I wanted to share with you is that the House passed Substitute House Bill 15 with an amendment that requires the Public Utilities Commission to establish a community energy pilot program. If you remember, we talked about a community energy pilot program last year, but that bill did not pass the House. This is, will enable, you know, virtual net metering, where you will not have to have solar panels on your house, but you could purchase some solar power from a larger project, a community solar project. This might help to develop our landfill project. Now, it has passed the House. It went over to the Senate. We'll see what happens in the Senate. The Senate also passed an energy bill, but it did not include a community energy pilot program. So, I will keep you posted on that. Speaking of energy, I think you probably read the article where City of Fairfield, for their electric aggregation program, signed a one-year contract for 9.39 cents per kilowatt hour. If you'll remember, we just signed a two-year agreement for 7.1 cents, 7.17 cents per kilowatt hour. So, electric rates are going up. These two energy bills will address other issues, including the standard service offer that our utilities provide us. I got on the apples-to-apples comparison and found that a similar program to ours, now, a two-year agreement, would be over nine cents per kilowatt hour. So, you know, I'm happy to see that they're finally addressing the community energy pilot program at the state level. I hope it is adopted by the Senate and signed by the governor. Thank you. That's all I have this evening.
All right. Thank you very much. Mike?
Nothing else. Thank you.
Okay. Jeff, you got something there?
Just a couple of quick announcements. We were notified earlier this week by the Ohio Department of Criminal Justice Services that we received a grant in the amount of $38,437.20. That is a zero-match grant, and that will help us with our bodyboard camera program. We last received that in 2022, and we're one of 131 agencies this year to receive that grant. A couple announcements on our personnel process. As you know, last meeting, we swore in Lieutenant Adam Price. That has created a trickle effect in our department, and we are currently in the middle of a sergeant promotional process. We hope to have the interviews in the next couple of weeks, and I believe chief will be sending a name to the city manager, hopefully the beginning weeks of May, for that new sergeant. In addition, we have posted a hiring announcement on our webpage and our Facebook page, so if you know anybody that is looking to enter the career of law enforcement, or anybody that would be an outside candidate, we do have a lateral hiring process for those people. If you know of anybody, we are hiring, and we look forward to seeing their application on our, on our website.
Super.
Thank you.
Thank you. Heidi?
I just have one thing. So, the state auditor's office has begun the 2024 annual audit of the city of Oxford. We were required to be audited by the state of Ohio, so, just so you know, you may be getting some.
Audit communication.
Communication, as per they usually do with the mayor.
Thank you very much. Chief DeThridge?
Hi.
Okay, thank you. And today, we have Deanna Barber here. No relation.
No.
And, Deanna, do you have anything?
Nothing.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Nothing, thank you.
Okay. Chris?
Hi. I'd like to address Mr. Shoker's comments about what contact we may or may not have had. So, first, I'll kind of tell you what my negotiation style is on things like this, which is, I've learned over 37 years that you got to get past the money first. If you don't get the money, you're not going to, it's not worth it to get into the details. So, following the last council meeting, I contacted Mr. Ferris on, by phone on March 21st, followed up with an email on that. I called him again on March 25th to clarify something in the email. I emailed him again on March 25th as a follow-up. But when I called, I also left a message, because I was leaving town, and I provided him my cellphone number and asked him to call me, so that we could have further discussions. If there's some misunderstanding with that, that's fine. I just need to have some feedback and, if there's more information there. So, I have not had, received a call back. I know that Mr. Ferris has been busy. So, that's the report. I don't know what else to do at this point, but I'm happy to speak with Mr. Shoker afterwards, and see if he can give me some guidance. Like, we can't get into the details, since he has counsel, but he can give me some direction.
Okay. Thank you very much. Michael?
In lieu of the approaching inclement weather in the next couple of days, and based on the inclement weather of Sunday, there seems to still be a little confusion about what to do when the tornado sirens go off. They're called tornado sirens for a reason. If the sirens go off, that means we are in imminent danger of either being in the path of a tornado, or having a tornado develop very near us. So, when the sirens go off, you should definitely seek shelter, especially if you're outdoors. If you're indoors, if we should have a tornado alert during the day, during classes, and your professors won't let you leave a room that maybe has windows in it, you should get up and leave that room anyway. So, that's all I have to say about that.
And also, if you hear more sirens go off, that's not an all-clear. That just means a new warning in our county has been issued. So, continue to take advice of that. Yeah, thank you.
A couple of updates. One, thank you to Kim for her presentation. It was really great. And I think just really, I'm on the board of Enjoy Oxford as part of my role on city council. And if anything, I think you undersold how much work you all do. You are busy all the time. Every board meeting we go to is just like a new, fresh list of a million things that you all have going on. One of those one million things is working on getting Talawanda School Board approval to put a Legends and Lore marker in front of their administrative offices, which was the residence of Harry Toby, who is a, as the kind of marker designation would suggest, a pretty legendary figure in Oxford. He is the only non-baseball player in.
He's one of five.
One of five. Fortunately, I have an expert right here. One of five non-baseball players in the Reds Hall of Fame, because he was that much of a.
He's in Cooperstown.
Cooperstown. MLB Hall of Fame. Again. Good thing I have an expert. Thanks, Mike. So, he is a really legendary person. In addition to being a huge Reds fan, was also a really avid Miami sports fan, and a stone mason. So, several buildings around town were built by him. So, the next step will be to fill out that application. So, thank you to Kim for doing two public presentations in a couple of weeks, and I know she loves it so, so much. And thinking, speaking of things that Enjoy Oxford is supporting, Oxford Bee Festival is going to happen between now and our next meeting. So, that will be Saturday, April 12th.
I understand the whole town is buzzing about it.
So, I've heard. So, it will kick off with a 5K and 10K on the local trails. It'll start at Leonard Howell Park. Still time to register, plenty of time to register. And then, from 1:00 to 8:00 PM, we'll have a nice party uptown, and it will be great. And yes, please stay safe with all of the inclement weather. I hope we get it all out of the way, and start crossing your fingers now for amazing weather on April 12th. And that's all.
Good. Chantel?
A couple of things. A really sweet anecdote about the easement near Honor is that, is actually one of the children that live in one of those houses that convinced their parent that this was a good project. Their question was, how, how is this different than a sidewalk? And their parent was like, oh, that's a really good point. So, it completely shifted the trajectory on where that parent was going, and thank you, child, for your, your logic in that. And so, it's, yeah, it's a good thing. And then, the other thing, I know Doug is so good about following all the craziness that the state house likes to do, and I'm glad that there's something that's positive. But they are forming their own state Doge caucus to try to squeeze local governments even further. So, that is something we definitely need to look out for. One of the interviews I heard from one of their members was about property taxes and trying to reduce that quite a bit, in a sense of trying to make it so that the state does not help the senior citizens who get support from the state to pay for their property taxes. That's what they want to cut, the aid to the senior citizens. So, something we'll need to look out for, that, who knows where that's going to go, but it is a very alarming thing that they're trying to do.
A few things. I noticed that our fire and EMS is now offering CPR training, and so I'm glad to see that back. It's a great public service, and so I hope to be able to take advantage of that, and I encourage other people too, as well, to register. On Monday, April 7th, the Interfaith Center on Zoom, at 6 o'clock, is having a Go Red for Women Foundation fundraiser. And so, we're going to have some conversations about heart health for women. And so, I encourage you to go to the Interfaith Center website, look at the promo, and join. It's called Art in Heart. So, we're going to have somebody who's going to be doing a diagram. She takes notes at all of the different presentations, but she actually diagrams the notes and creates art out of it. And we're encouraging people who want to join on Zoom just to bring something to color, or knit, or whatever you like to do while you sit and listen to the presentation, and perhaps share some of your own stories. And then, I also want to say a couple of things. I'm grateful for McCullough Hyde Hospital. I was in the hospital on Thursday. I was very sick, and I got wonderful care. But one of the things that happened while I was there, as I was being wheeled around, was the gentleman who was, who was pushing me in the wheelchair, he said, are you on city council? And I was like, yeah. And it turned out that we had shared a walk together on the trail. Shortly after the connection from Pfeffer Park to the high school was done, probably early fall last year, we were walking, and sometimes, you know, you walk by yourself, and you end up walking next to a stranger, and we said hello to each other, and then we started chit-chatting, and then we just walked about 15 minutes together, just talking. And he remembered me, and then, when I looked at him again, I'm like, oh, yes, I do remember you. And it's just one of the wonderful things about connection and trails in our community. Strangers become friends, and walk on the trails, and say hi to people that you pass by, make eye contact, and if you're not in a rush, maybe walk and talk for a few minutes. All right.
Thank you. Jason?
That's awesome. I was excited to hear about the potential community energy pilot program. I hope if that goes forward, we could really try to incorporate that into proposals for the closed landfill, because that would be amazing. Other than that, the message I've been doing after every council meeting in these trying times is, stay strong and keep up the good fight.
Thank you.
So, I just have to share kind of a counterpoint anecdote to what Councilor Franklin said. I remember I had a procedure at McCullough Hyde, and I was coming out of anesthesia and was being wheeled out, and someone said, don't put the trail by my neighborhood. I said, could you just let me get to my car? So, anyway, the small town has its pros and its cons. So, but I wanted to just welcome Chad Smith to the Director of Parks and Recreation. I want to thank everyone who was involved in the search. I understand it was a pretty competitive search. With that many applicants, I'm sure that we had some talented local people, but it must have drawn a wide pool of people, which is really a testament to the city of Oxford, that people, I mean, Chad had a pretty good gig where he was, and people are willing to come and work for the city of Oxford. And, and, and those of us who have worked with Chad in his various different roles, has been a great partner of the city of Oxford and the Oxford area trails going back years. And so, he's a person of energy, and vision, and ambition. And so, I really look forward to his leadership here, and, and I hope that we can find a way, I think that we, of course, have always constrained in terms of the amount of resources that we have. But there's some significant needs on the park, on the recreation side. I mean, if you've been in the tri building, you know that something needs to happen there, and, and, and so I really look forward to that kind of leadership, and at a time when I think some transformational leadership could really transform our parks and recreation system. In addition to preserving all the wonderful things that it's done, it's a wonderful system with a wonderful group of people, and I think he'll be a great leader. So, thank you.
Thank you, Dave. Three things. I wanted to echo Dave's comments about Chad Smith. I think he's going to be an excellent Parks and Recreation Director. I was lucky enough to be called at the last minute to be a representative on the search committee, so I can tell you that he competed against very strong candidates, any of which who probably could have done the job. But I think he is the best one for this position, and I think he'll do a great job. I'm really looking forward to him taking on that position in May. I want to remind people about the Bee Festival. And it already, Alex already told you about it, but it's, it's a big deal. There'll be music uptown. It's when students are here, so tell your friends. And, you know, we've got a Bee Alley, so this is cool. So, we're going to, we're going to do it up well. And it's not too early to mention that on Saturday, May 3rd, is the Kiwanis Pancake Day. So, mark that on your calendars. May 3rd Pancake Day is at the Talawanda High School, and, yeah, it's a big community event that everybody goes to, and it's a lot of fun. So, I hope everybody takes advantage of it. With all that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor of adjourning the meeting at 8:40?
Aye.
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 Thank you. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you. Meeting is adjourned.